All right, I'm following the order. Monday meeting. Blank mission meeting, Freddy's here, I'm here, Michael's here, Andrew's here, and Jason's here, and Paul's gonna sign in pretty soon. Do we have any agenda modifications? No? Should we move on to the approval of the March tenth and April fourteenth minutes?
I moved that we approved the minutes for March fourteenth.
And seconds?
I'm still getting myself organized.
Oh, sorry.
So.
I did make those changes you asked for.
On which one?
All, all the changes.
Okay.
You had RBS, you had. You had the original minutes, got those, and then you did the March minutes.
Okay.
The other day.
Can I? So the ones that. You know, I must be having problems with my email. Cause I got a email May fifth. Okay, which has some stuff. But I didn't get an email after that. You have an email after that with minutes? Divisions?
Um, yeah. I have one. May eighth, Michael Asterson grammar, grammar changes to these documents.
And I didn't see the version of that.
So that was attachments. Um, it says recent, oh, it was, I'm sorry, he sent it, yeah, he said reset was part title, I have DRB in the brain, and then, yeah. So that should have come out May sixth. So I'll be RBS changes. And then the based in minutes for March tenth, was there, was there an issue there?
March tenth, no, uh, the March tenth minutes, I'm good with.
Okay.
I'm okay with the March ten minutes.
Okay, so I moved that we approved the March tenth minutes.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'm following that, yes.
Okay, take it to a vote. I.
Bye.
Approved. And then April fourteenth.
Okay, April fourteenth. Where is?
That was the one, all we did was. Elect chairs.
Yes, and then I worked with Jason on that one. And you made a tweet for the, the date, and we were good.
Yeah, and then the one about the majority vote, something like that, I didn't add it, because it's, it's the law, you can't really change it even if you wanted to.
Okay.
And that's, I wrote that in email.
Okay. I'm okay with that one.
I moved that we approved the April fourteenth meeting, uh, minutes to a second.
Second.
Take it to a vote. Aye.
Aye.
Good, that was easy. Do we have anyone from the public?
No, you scared me away.
All right.
Three minutes, what am I gonna get done in three minutes?
All right, I was gonna talk about the RBS.
Yeah.
Okay, we got.
So Jason, we reviewed. I had the comma and the, and the period.
A bunch of commas, then you came in and asked me for a period.
That's the one you sent out.
Exactly. Yes.
Printed the most recent one, he gave it to Michael. Where's the top?
Right now, we're looking at the certificate of occupancy.
Uh, yeah, the. Sorry, nine dot four certificate of occupancy compliance, let's go right here.
There's been an email on the. On the eight.
Okay. All right. All right, guys. Where's? I'm really struggling with this.
Okay.
This is what I think makes sense, okay? I asked for those two changes. And I don't understand, I think Jason, I try, I don't know who to share this with, do I feel like a group?
Well, I'm actually kind of besotted, because that one with the period, and then the the, that you asked for it, it's not showing here, and I definitely made that change.
Well, obviously. Hey, there's two sentences, and these are run-on sentences that don't make sense. The way they're written, that's what I struggled with. There's a.
Why is it not showing?
Yeah, because I have one with comma and then a lowercase t.
Yes, yes, that's the way, and, and it's, so, so let's visualize, the applicant shall record or submit for recording the application or certificate as required. Yeah, that's the way.
And that's what I did, and it's not showing for some reason.
As required, but maybe is the, 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 is a. So it's so. You see, it's not complete sentences. The applicant shall have recorded or submit for recording the application or certificate is required by thirty VSA section fifty-one. Uh, residential. Building energy standards or fifty-three commercial enter building energy standards, period.
Okay.
The RBEs CVA is a requisite to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
I think that's clear.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. The way it should read.
Yes.
And I, and I made that change, so I don't know why it's not printing off like that. I get it like two seconds after you sent an email the other day.
Yeah. So I need, that's my point.
Yeah, I'm with you, buddy.
Okay. Um, and. So, and then there's this, and a little I, in the case of an owner builder, when the owner in fact directs the details of construction regarding installation of materials not compliant with RBS. That's a fraction of a sentence, a Vermont owner builder certificate disclosure statement must be submitted of the application of certificates for occupancy, so it can be placed in file. So I think after RBEs, it should be a comma, in the little a.
Comma or semicolon?
Hmm, now you're asking that.
Oh, he said a semicolon.
That's on my pay grade.
Uh, should I just open this thing up in Word and put this in?
And then we'll just make that a lowercase a.
I don't think it's a semicolon. It's, it's a, the first part of the sentence is basically preparing. For the latter. So I don't think it's a semicolon, I think it's a comma.
All right, so you wanna put a semicolon or a comma after?
A comma after RBS.
Come, and then capital it?
No, little a, little a.
Little a?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the case of an owner builder, come, when the owner in fact directs the details of construction regarding installation of materials not compliant with RBS. Come, a Vermont owner builder disclosure statement must be submitted with the application of certificate of occupancy, so it can be placed in file. I think that reads correct.
Like. Correctly.
It does read correctly.
Is this North East and Road or Sesame Street? Is this North East and Road or Sesame Street? Paul, hello?
Sorry, I'm a little discombobulated a little late.
We will stop the, what are, what are we doing there?
Michael, am I, Michael tool at dual engineering, correct?
Yes.
RBEs. Attach file. RBS changes repaired, open, stand. Okay, I'll send this to Jason as well. Because it's a punctuation issue, it's not a content issue, correct?
It's. It's, we're not changing. The rules, we're just basically making it understandable.
So it's not a time, it's, it's, it's a punctuation problem, not a content problem, right? So like, I've sent you and Jason. The repair document with the punctuation you've asked for. If we put that in. Are you good?
Yeah, I just wanna say.
I just emailed you.
Cause I asked.
And it actually was already done, I don't know why it's not taken.
Okay.
I made it a PDF and it sent it to you. Does anyone have, I mean, it's just, we're just adding RBS, it matches state code, it's.
I mean, I don't like. This, so I would like to just, but.
What don't you like about it?
I don't like the rules.
It isn't state statute, though.
It's a state statute.
Um, right. So, other than that, I don't. Have anything to say.
Yes, I, I'm okay with this.
All right, so you're like.
With this version right here.
Yes, the one I just PDF'd and sent to you.
So we can approve it with that modification.
Yes, we can approve it tonight and move past this, I mean, because it's a punctuation issue, not a context issue.
Attorneys read over these before we.
So the LURs are pretty long, there's a lot of punctuation in them, so it's gonna be kind of an interesting.
I just don't want to accidentally, you know. I think we're pretty good, but.
What do you mean, as far as punctuation?
Having the meeting be different when a lawyer reads it.
Oh, this meeting?
This one or any other change we make.
Fair enough. I mean, I can.
Run it through AI, see what they have to say.
Oh.
I mean, we have to.
Not worried about the punctuation, but it's just.
I mean, when we make bigger changes.
Yeah.
Also.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, that was just a punctuation change.
I don't know, our process isn't that different when we got it.
You would.
I think we can have the legal cities and towns help us too.
Uh.
And they have.
They.
Lawyers.
Right. If, yeah, whether or not they would, depends on what you're asking them to do.
Do we have maps from?
I'm gonna ask you if you heard from Brian.
Nope, I'm gonna make a phone call.
Okay, so I, I, I haven't, I haven't called him or nothing either.
Oh, I will.
I'll call him in the morning. I wanted to ask you last week if you had heard from him for certain reasons.
So if you call him, will you call me? And that way we don't bug him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine forty-five in the morning.
Okay, I'll already be.
But that's when, that's probably when I get an email, I'll make that call.
Okay.
So it's, it's, he was like, oh, when he said that, he said it would be a little bit of time, I said, that's all right, we're good, but he only said a little bit, like, three weeks, and that was.
And I had asked him, and he said he was gonna get going on.
And that was seven weeks ago.
Before that, yeah.
So.
I mean, what gets in the way, as we all know.
And you wanted to, you wanted the, the paper and the digital version too, right? That's what I told him.
Yeah.
Cause he, when I talked to him, he was like, well, and we're like, I wish Aunt should do whatever she told you.
Was Nikki saying that you can still get my learnings expensive?
RBEs related change to the section nine.
I didn't change that.
No, that's true.
He said, I will pay for money.
He said, someone will say.
They don't have it in print or four.
You wanna do that?
There's a place in Burlington, repo graphics.
I fall.
Maybe they. Could do it? Cause then we could just.
Let's get this digitally, see if we can like it. Then we can figure out what.
Okay.
Cause we maybe like.
Right.
You wanna march into a grievance? Yeah, I, I, I. I'm okay with it.
You wanna move to a grievance?
Yes.
I'll second that. Wanna take it to a vote?
Aye.
Aye. And so do we. We'll move to second it?
Michael, Michael, I?
I second. All right, do you guys wanna move on to four dot three?
Yes.
Review and discussion about. Question four dot three.
So I moved that we approved four dot three.
Okay.
But you have to move it and second it before you.
Oh, sorry, I moved, yes, all right, so I second that, and the chair, is there a second, yes, the chair states the motion, asks for discussion, okay, we have. We've brought to talk about. Discussion of four dot three campers and temporary structures, let's have a discussion. I built my rabbit holes, T T.
It just takes a lot from being exposed to.
Oh, yes, I'm, yeah, it's a learning experience.
Nobody's living and dying on the sword, um. So I had a question, we virtually repeat the same thing twice. And if we're looking to listen to Mr. Fenton, which I thought was a good point, when he said. Let's consolidate this, why not say up to two?
The first one says. He's talking about using a camper. On any piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
The second part is limiting it to two. I understand what you're saying, and I, I did hear the words that came out of your mouth, and I think all of that, I, 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 I thought about this, and. They wrote it the first time with two sections. We kept it as two sections. You're not wrong, and you're not wrong, I just.
So why are we doing it? Cause it sounds more legalese?
It's, it's really, it's, it just makes it more confusing and.
You just say up to two.
redundant and.
So the top one is it should be unlawful for any person to use a camper or other temporary structure. Except improved camp campground or on residential undeveloped lots subject to fine provisions, that just says whether or not you can use a camper, right?
Right.
So how would you add up to two campers? Because at a campground, you could in theory buy six campers and then six bots.
Okay, that's a valid point I hadn't considered. Um. Well, it would be the same. It should be unlawful for any person to use a camper. As a camper or other temporary shelter.
Except.
And maybe, can't you just make it easy? Up to two. Uh, I don't know, I, forget I said anything, that was just a thought.
I grabbed it as well. I really did.
What?
What?
When did we come up?
No, it's, it's the thing, it's because it says in the town of Fason, it's a campground, you can use a camper. But in that, in a campground, you'd be able to plug in the power and maybe possibly set thick and. Definitely water, maybe water, so.
So what if you just under B just said. Two campers or other temporary shelters may be used on a residential lot in which the dwelling is a principal use or an. Undeveloped lot with the same. Criteria as above. Then. And isn't there somewhere where it says you can live in your camper while you're building?
Yes, it's right there, so the camper or temporary structure may be occupied for greater than ninety days in a residential lot, it may be a principal accessory dwelling. Of course, you write regulations, and then you go into nine dot, there's, I can't quote it, but it talks about how. Jason can give you a temporary to live in an RV while you build a house.
You still gotta get a permit.
You still have to get a permit.
Okay, cause I.
You get a permit, and then it works.
Okay, and it, we currently have a one-year restriction on that, is that correct?
I'm not aware of a one.
No, like, if you were to, according to this one, it says if you were to use it as a, um. When it falls into it, it's actually like, you can actually use. An RV as your residence.
And you know that.
Long as you.
And it was nine point.
Three or.
I looked, and I didn't find it.
What's your question, Freddy?
Somewhere, it says that you can live in your camper while you build a house. But I thought it said for up to one year.
That, but you can use an RV. As a dwelling unit. Providing that you handle all the proper permitting with water, waste water and all that, but it doesn't say like what you were saying, quote unquote. You can, you live in RV while you're building, I don't know any. But that would fall, that would fall, but that would fall into this category, as temporary shelter. The other one you're talking about is actually using it as.
Your residence.
As your residence. Cause I do have the ability to issue temporary permits, like people want. Um, to get a store, like the builders when they're building a house. They want a storage container to put their tools and, and, and supplies and stuff in, they're ready, that's supposed to be like a temporary. Permit.
We should change that.
What's this?
You need a permit to put a con, connects on your.
They're ready to, because it is a, it is a shed.
It's a shed, and I see five mile setbacks, that's what happened at the Bonner Center facing. So you can't just put connects in a new property randomly.
Oh, you're talking about the Turner House?
Yeah, but that's a waste, but basically, if you wanna have a connect, it's a, it's a. It's a structure.
But it's movable.
But that, that, what you, what we're talking about, I believe, is it, it's either four point two or four point four, it's right before or after this, talking about if you were to use a storage container. To store supplies, it could be deemed an accessory structure. Shed. Think it's four point four and four point two, it's like right next to four point three.
So four dot sixteen is a temporary permit may be issued by the administrative officer for non-plant structures, excluding residential dwellings which are incidental to a construction project for a period not excluding one year, not exceeding one year.
Oh, yeah, so where, where'd you find that?
Four dot sixteen, temporary uses and structures.
Four dot sixteen, that's why I didn't go far enough.
And then the use, and then in subpart C of that, it's the use of temporary structures including campers, recreational vehicles, tents and yours for dwelling purposes shall meet the requirements for campers and temporary structures under section four dot three. So you could live in it, but you couldn't plug it into power or water while you built your house.
Which is just ridiculous.
If we don't change four dot three.
Right.
Still limited to ninety days, though.
No. Four dot, four dot sixteen allows you to go up to a year.
Okay.
But, you can't build a house for any year now.
Which could.
But you could what?
Renew it.
Yeah, conditional upon written agreement by the owner, remove the structure and or discontinue his plot expiration of the permit. This permit may be renewed under special circumstances at the discretion of the administrative officer, so no, you can live in your camper on your property while you build a house, but currently you can't plug it into power or water. Currently. Currently, that's what we're working.
Right, oh, yeah, I'm all about letting people do it.
Who do you got?
I just.
You're, you're on board, you're gonna share.
I might share my screen later.
All right.
Please do.
Andrew, do you have two cents on this?
On the.
Four dot three changes, I mean, there's, it's a serious, it's a hundred eighty degree change in the LURs.
But it is. What the intention was, they just buggered it up.
I'm fine with that, how it's written in your proposal.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I agree, we try to shorten it, but it's fine. I don't know.
Right.
So.
I like the intent of it.
Call the what? Less Michael has something to say.
Okay.
I moved to approve the section about three revisions as put in the meeting. Do I have a second?
One second.
Let's put it to a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Wow, that was easy.
Aye.
Okay, Paul.
I, I.
He's muted.
I can read this.
I'm not muted. Not muted. Can you not hear me?
Um. All right, so in the next.
You're not hearing me at all?
To talk about.
Can't hear me, I guess my microphone's on.
Our list of revisions. Some of this stuff happened before I started, I started hanging out with you guys last April, and most of this stuff predates me, do you guys have, I can send it to you, I found it. That Jason sent out. The one thing on our record of revisions is the thing about trails, which we spent four meetings talking about. Jason has fixed the link. I've spoken to Freddie. And we agreed that we just. Take it off of our revisions list, and then during our town plan and rewriting the LURs for next time, we talk about it more.
What is the link fixed to? The same.
The same exact one it was.
I don't know, I, I might, I'm not saying which way I feel about this, I just wanted to talk about it. We spent four meetings talking about this.
It's what our board chair said at the meeting.
What?
It's what our board chair said at the meeting. Fix the link, it's what the people voted for. And anything that we do, they have to approve.
This is like what it does.
So my recommendation chatting with Lang is that we take our list and talk to the select board before we spend time in things. And see. Where, where their head is on any of them, before we spend an inordinate amount of time.
We already spent a phenomenal amount of time on this. And I thought we had learned an awful lot about paths and trails, we had the public come in, the public gave us comments. And I thought we had landed. On using a Vermont-based. Website, the A and R, I forget what it was, but it was linked to a whole bunch of things, and I was. I was okay with that, I thought we were all okay with that, we don't need to have unanimous decision-making ability in this, in this room.
I'm just, we're not putting it to the select board. That, that, that was, that was, we're just, we're just dropping the issue, and we're gonna pick it back up in the town, and when we do the town plan and rewrite the LURs.
There is, um, the Supreme Court. Said that the town doesn't have that right. To say anything, Michael. And.
I'm a de minimis.
De minimis use. And, um. The, uh, Vermont Trails and Greenways were, is coming up with a list. Of.
I don't want, I'll tell you what, Freddy, this is getting me really upset right now, and it's getting me upset because we spent four months on it. I thought we landed okay, the public said we were okay, everybody seemed to be okay with you. Okay, that's the way I interpreted it. And now we're raising it again, and we're basically saying, change what we all agreed to. And it's just making me say like. We just did a lot of work. And now you're saying you wanna basically go back to.
No, I, she didn't say that.
So why, why do we even raise this issue?
Because we fixed the link, and it was a contentious topic, and. That we put it back to what it was before, so we're, like, do we? I, I, I was upset that we spent four months following that.
And I thought we had agreed to some changes, we had really spent a lot of time on it. And this one gets me really concerned about working on this town plan. That's two hundred pages.
Of LUR.
And, and, and I was okay with the fact that. We tried really hard, Freddy, to get unanimous, we really did. And it was clear we weren't gonna get there.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I found out that we do not have to have unanimous decisions in this room. Three out of five is good enough.
That's true, but all we do is vote to send it to select board and the public, then they comment on it.
Yeah.
Then they come back.
Agreed.
Then we talk about it again.
So why don't we give them the, the fruits of our labors?
Okay.
And if, if, you know, Freddy's got a contact on the select board, and if he basically says no, fine, okay? That's what the select force is, but I think we spent a lot of work on this. Um, I. I thought we landed on a, and I, I worked really hard trying to get. Involvement in volume for everybody. And then we had the big meeting where people came and, and. And I still felt with incorporating the, the comments from the. From the, from the big meeting group, I thought we had done something reasonable. Um. I guess I had a hang up with the sunk costs on this.
With the what?
Sunk costs. We spent a lot of capital on them. And to just back off. Says to me. It was a waste of our time. Maybe it's a learning process. But. Okay.
Our current record of revisions are the exemption that we were, we, we voted on. The definition of trails.
Yes.
Which we voted on. And changing it to the Vermont, that's, that's where we're record revision.
Yes.
Also, the site plan twenty-four to thirty-six, which is fine, that's for the DRB, we had a revision. Where we add, you'd have to bring a site plan with twenty-four by thirty-six in size, maybe need a.
May.
Maybe, I'm just reading the record of revisions that we're working towards, that we're gonna talk about next week. I don't know what section three sixty-three change set forth in. Three, six, three. Typo correction, there's a typo correction in three dot six, there's a typo correction.
There's two typos, it, it, cause it tells you to go to another. Section, and it said the top section.
All right, so those are just two typos that are being fixed. And then article, article two tables two by two, I wasn't here for any of this, remove from a conditional use is the districts per removal of section four dot one. Any above amendments still permitted use, I don't know what that is.
That's essentially dwelling, you know?
No, essentially dwelling is article.
One.
Four point one, okay, so revisions one and two, this is from October twenty-first and twenty-fourth, it's just, I found it in my email.
But you all, you all get one for, for the next meeting.
Yeah.
That includes.
It's just funny, you know, we're gonna talk, to do a meeting, we're gonna talk about.
Of three six.
Yeah, this one right here.
Article two tables two, two.
How much time do you guys spend talking about eight? How much time do you guys spend talking about A D, and that was before me, was it a meeting or two meetings?
Two meetings.
For what, the A D U stuff?
Where did you guys, where did you guys land?
Oh, we, we, we had, we had a very clear.
We just cut that section out.
The conditional use.
Yep.
So it's just nine hundred feet or thirty percent. Is that how you still feel today?
I don't really.
I don't.
I don't either. So get ready for A D U discussion next week.
So, I mean, I think that if you know that's gonna be on the agenda, we can prepare our thoughts.
Yeah, that's why I'm talking about it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, yeah, and then, and then Jason sent me a bunch of stuff that A D Us, and it raised another issue. In, um, where was it, in Colchester, I think it is, and if you have a non-comforming structure for setbacks, they let you build as long as you don't make it worse, did you see this?
That's a pretty common.
But we don't allow that.
Yeah, we do.
If you're expanding the non-compliant structure, but if you're building a new structure, it has to be set.
So as long as they're connected.
That's why there's a certain application I'm going on right now where somebody wants to build an accessory structure to their house. But they don't wanna, they don't wanna attach it to the house, which is a non-compliant structure, and they now wanna set that layer because.
That doesn't seem right.
If they just attached it, we'd just be falling under non-compliant structure. They're not increasing the non-compliant apartment or fifty percent, the degree of non-compliance is less than what the.
Yeah.
So you, so basically, these A D Us, you wanna talk about them some more?
Yeah.
We can open that, everyone's okay to open that can.
And can we do some research prior to the meeting, like what does Warren do, what does Waitsfield do? What does Moretown do, should we have some uniformity?
Yeah.
I thought we did that, Freddie, I.
No, I'm, I'm raising this issue.
Well, we did do this, okay, maybe Paul remembers, remember, we looked at Warrens, we looked at several others. And we concluded that, that this change to be was different. And we took it out after a lot of discussion to comply with that statute.
Yeah.
Paul, do you remember those discussions?
Can you hear me now, I tried to. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, we did, we, um, we pulled the, we pulled the L U Rs from, uh, from Warren and Waitsfield. And, and tried to sync them up as much as possible.
Spending a lot of time on this, and we.
It's a three hour long.
It was a conscious decision for us to do this, and I was okay with it, and I don't understand why we're opening it up again, what's the new information?
Well, this, this room you're sitting in right now is a thousand square feet. I don't think that's a lot of space, and a lot of, my house is only eighteen hundred square feet, so I will be stuck at nine hundred square feet in an A D U. And I feel that that's very restrictive.
So, as I recall the conversation, some of the arguments are, this could be construed as a backend around subdividing a lot.
That's correct, yeah, okay.
Okay, we are also concerned about someone with a, you know, five thousand square foot house, putting out a four thousand square foot A D U and using it as a short-term rental unit. And we went, we went to the neighboring towns, we looked around, and we said, look, let's go back to the state statute and just, and leave it at that.
So the problem there is that, if a state statute is nine hundred or thirty percent, right? And if you wanna go larger than that, you can get conditional use, you can go in for the D R B. But then there was a new law that was put in place that said you can't be more restrictive in including an A D U compared to a single-family home. So now they don't have to go to the D R B anymore.
Well, we went through all that, I remember that conversation.
Tenfold, so now we're just capping them at, at thirty percent or nine hundred square feet. And there's no way for them to go any bigger, they can't.
Talk about your property, but you stop and think about the town plan, the town plan was trying to prevent extreme parcelization of our township.
Okay.
It's clear on that, and it's trying to retain the, if you call it, nature of the town. And if we, and, and, and we had a zoning system, we, we have a subdivision system, and if we, and, and, and by changing and, and, and putting in any size A D Us, it, in my opinion, is doing an end around, around some of the goals of the town plan. If someone wants to put a bigger house on as an A D U, that's could be a conditional use review, and people will look at it and decide they wanna subdivide or whatever. But what, what, what I recall in during our discussion is we did not want to go over above what the state statute said we had to.
So you guys agree that we can keep talking about this the next meeting?
My two cents is that we couldn't agree, and we didn't have a basis for a square footage.
Yeah.
And so we said, let's just go with the state.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody was thrilled with that, right, but currently it's ninety percent, is that correct?
Currently is.
Ninety percent is too much, I'd like it to be brought down to fifty or forty, I'll put that on the table, fi- I, fifty's a number that I'm happy with.
Wh- which again, it's all just circum.
But fifty percent, if you have a two thousand square foot house, you can get a thousand square feet, if you have a three thousand square foot house, it's about a fifteen hundred.
But I, my point is that it should have a basis for the decision that we make. Um, I mean, I personally think the nine hundred square feet is small. But this is getting into the next time, um, if what we need for housing, which is what the law, the state law is to solve, or to, you know, jump at, nine hundred square feet is too small.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, we, we can also, I mean, this is, it's, it's forward for the next meeting to talk about A D Us.
Exactly.
But we can also put a max square footage in the L U Rs, that's another option.
Right.
I just think that this room is, is a, is a thousand square feet, and I know, you know, it's a big room, don't get me wrong, but if you wanna have two bedrooms.
Kitchen, bathroom, bedrooms, living room, yeah, mudroom.
Yeah, you run out of space pretty quickly, and.
I think, Michael, in some ways, the A D Us, it's density too, it's actually preserving some open area.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, we don't wanna cap stuff and then have people have to go subdivide, which could happen, right?
I don't, I'd rather see.
Partialization.
I'd rather see A D Us than subdivisions, I mean, you know, if you read section one dot two of the L U Rs, you know, subpart C, it says accommodate a reasonable rate of population growth, this is what we're supposed to do, accumulate accommodate a reasonable rate of population growth that does not overburden town services and facilities or adversely affect the town's rural character, supporting businesses and industries that are comparable and complementary to face its rural character and high quality life, promote development of wide variety of housing types to meet the needs of residents, we have a housing shortage, A D Us are probably not the answer, but they are a Band-Aid, they could help. Like, I would love to build an A D U so that I could, so the teachers could have a place to live, like. But to, to spend the money, and Freddie knows how much it costs to build per square foot, to spend the money to build a one-bedroom, my heart, you're spent, it's not that much more expensive to build two beds compared to one bed, by the time you do all the permits, the building, the concrete, the grading, all that stuff.
And anyone can be a duplex now anyways.
Anyone can be a duplex.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
I thought any lot, any residential zoning could be duplex. So, the way that is that, that law was written is last year or year before, is it a duplex has to be in allowed use anywhere, single-family residence isn't allowed use, but allowed use it could be either, um, permitted use or conditional. I thought it was everywhere, it was any single. A D U is A D U by right.
You can build an A D U into your house.
If you have a single-family residence on it.
Yeah, you can build an A D U, but there's a square footage restriction.
And right, and the, the construction costs, it's your heating, it's your whole infrastructure. So, cause people take the square footage out of the middle, that doesn't solve, right, it doesn't cut your cost cause you still have the same number of windows, you still have all of the other structures that go with it.
So, I, I mean, I have an extra guy when it comes to A D Us, and I've been, I've been waiting for my moment to talk about it, before we send the record revisions, I just wanna talk about it again because I think nine hundred feet and thirty percent is too restrictive.
It clearly states right here in section, titled twenty-four, section four three zero three.
Yes.
Accessory dwelling unit means a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate to a single-family dwelling and has facilities and provisions for independent living, including sleeping, food prep, sanitation, provided there's compliance with all the following. A, the property has sufficient wastewater capacity, and B, the unit does not exceed thirty percent of the total habitable floor area of a single-family dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is greater.
Yeah, state code, that's, but a lot of towns have larger than that.
But this is the state code.
I understand that, but go to the next section down, well, the state statute.
So, if. It's whichever's larger, so if you have a ten thousand square foot home, you could have a three thousand square foot A D U.
No, that is correct.
No, no, the, the spacing thing, whichever is larger.
Nine hundred square feet or thirty percent.
It does not exceed thirty percent of the total habitable floor area, or nine hundred square feet. So.
So if you had a ten thousand square foot home, you could have a three thousand square.
Yeah, you're just, now you're just, now you're making it harder for people. Cause if you have a ten thousand square foot home, you could build a three thousand.
How many ten square foot homes are in face?
What?
Probably none, I was using it for easy figuring.
Yeah, I know. This is the first time for everything.
Right.
I know I'm sticking it.
I mean, I just, I don't think Michael was getting that bit of it.
What?
That it could be a three thousand square foot A D U.
Yeah.
That you were stuck on the nine hundred square feet, am I wrong, Michael?
No, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my mind back to a year ago. And all the discussions.
Can you do that for both of us, cause I, I can't, I, I'm incapable of setting my mind back there right now.
I have the three hour meeting, if you guys wanna watch the video, download it, where you can watch Deuce has talked about it.
It was forty-three oh three, Jason.
Forty-three, thank you.
Forty-three oh three, number thirty-eight.
Awesome. Uh, here are definitions, I'm actually looking for the, uh, I'm looking for the actual statute. But the, the definitions are very important.
Well, Heinsberg. Single-family dwellings more than four thousand square feet, maximum apartment size of thirty percent. A single-family dwelling sixteen hundred to four thousand square feet, maximum apartment size is twelve hundred square feet. Single-family dwellings less than sixteen hundred square feet, maximum apartment size is seventy-five percent of principal dwelling. That levels the playing field for the little guy who's got a little house, who wants, who lives fine, and just wants to build something else on the property. But to spend the money to build something on a property would be limited. I mean, I see, I see no reason why, if you, if you're sixteen hundred square foot house, you're just seventy-five percent.
Forty-four, forty-four, twelve E.
Forty-four, twelve E?
Twenty-four, D S A.
Sixteen hundred times.
That's from S one hundred. Yeah, this is talking about allowed use anywhere, single-family use.
Yeah.
Allowed use. Anywhere a single-family resident, then a lot, it could be an allowed use.
Yeah.
Should be an allowed use. Right, but it doesn't, it could fall.
You can have twelve hundred.
Anywhere a single-family resident. A, a duplex has to be an allowed use, but then can fall either under permitted use or condition. I don't keep on that one, so like. What my, my point connected to this is like. Yeah, the duplex there. Yeah, well, actually, it's. It's a dwelling.
I mean, it's just like a mother-in-law's partner, right?
Though it's.
You're quoting yourself from your email.
You'll get that statue, I have to talk about nothing in the subdivision.
And they're still have kids.
Bylaw that is less restrictive.
Anywho.
I'm trying to understand the workflows is here.
What's the work process?
So, a year ago.
Yep.
We had a long discussion. And I thought we had made an agreement, and then after a lot of discussion, we moved on.
That's correct.
And I thought that we moved on being, that's done, okay?
Nope.
And then we had another discussion about the paths, that went on for a long time, I thought we can't do it again with that, and we are done. But now we're opening up these Pandora boxes again, and I'm trying to understand the efficiency of what we're doing. The uses of our time.
We are, we are trying to get ready to send these off to the select. So that if we start working on the.
So basically, I've been coming to these meetings for over a year now, right? You guys have made re- made revisions, they never went to the select board, so now everything that's on that list is up for discussion, which is ridiculous, you're right. Now, R B S and four dot three, we're not gonna need to talk about again, we're gonna be able to put that in record revision and send it. The trails, then clearly you have some more talking to do about, because you don't, you wanna leave it on the list, which is fine. But this A D U stuff, I wasn't here for it, I joined the commission, or the, yeah, the commission. And I just wanna have another conversation about it, and it's clear from, that there should be more conversation, and like you said, it doesn't have to be a majority vote. Fair?
What I, I guess, what I'm concerned about is the efficiency and the use of our time.
Yeah. Fair enough.
I feel like.
It just gets stuck on a treadmill.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm like a hamster.
Hamster wheel.
Well, Paul, how do you feel, I mean.
Bike trainer, bike trainer, a bike trainer.
Bike trainer.
Spinning and going nowhere, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't have enough experience here, but it seems like and I don't know how past commissions have, have done it, um, it seems like if it's, if it's not a rule i- it should be, or there should be some, you know, just, just common practice is that once an issue has been debated and a revision has been approved by the commission as it was configured, um, then that I, I mean, I can appreciate you, you weren't around, Langdon, and now you, you wanna revisit some things that aren't to your liking, but we could, it just seems super counterproductive.
Okay.
And if, and if the, again, again, we're an advisory, this shit's not written in stone. Um, we're, 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 we're advisory in nature, um, we send this to the select board. Um, if the select board has heartburn about it, or you wanna voice your concerns to the select board, I think that that's the, the, the proper avenue, but to go back and, and try to, you know, unring the bell um, so to speak, is, is really, um, I, I sort of, I agree with, I agree with Michael, we could go, we could, we could just be s- stuck in mud.
Okay.
I, I just think that's, that's my feeling, uh, you know, I just think that it's, it's hell, I mean, we could have, we could have convened, I, I could have come on the, on the commission last year and and gone back and, and looked at things that I didn't like, that the, my predecessors had done, and, and set an agenda, and, um, and I, I think that that's, I don't, I don't think that that should be, um, I, allowed would be like by rule, but I just don't think that that should be the common, the common practice. I think that some deference should be given, um, to issues that were discussed, debated, and voted on. And, um, if there's an issue with, with some decisions that were made that you don't agree with, then, um, take it up with the select board.
So then for that, it ju- the, the whole idea is prepare to send the record of revisions to select board to get them put into L U Rs, so we can move. So ten four that it ju- the the whole idea is prepare to send the record of revisions to select board to get them put into L U Rs so we can move on with other business.
That's fine. You get sent it to him and say, yeah, we voted on this. I wasn't on, you know, you can say I. I I I I wasn't on the commission when we voted on this and. And um, you know, I I I'd like, you know, the the all these things go to public hearing as well. So.
No, ten four, I I I yeah, I will admit that I I wanted to know more about what they thought and I.
Yeah, I think I think if you, you know, if you have heartburn about it, um. There's plenty of uh, there's plenty of opportunities in the future. Um, to express your concerns and uh. And and make changes um. To the uh, to the L U Rs, um. You know, or or attempt to make changes to the L U R. Um, in the in the normal course of business going forward, but to to go back and and and. Um, sort of cherry pick um, issues. That have. In my opinion, been sort of put to bed rightly or wrongly. Um, but we spent a lot of time on this and and I think I think. You should look, you should be forward looking and not backward looking.
No, ten four, I, I mean, I asked Andrew and Freddie if they want to talk about it and they said they did. That was kind of, I I wasn't just me. And I I understand what you're saying. It's counterproductive. We have to, you know, we have to raise these issues to select board. Then the public has conversations with us about it and then we work work first from there to put them in L U Rs. I totally get that. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are, these are revisions that of 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 prior commission. Before you you came on, you know, before you joined, um, and before you became chair. Um, these are, these are things that we did and um. You can disagree with them, but I don't think it's appropriate to um. To 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 re revisit them at this point.
Okay.
This is my opinion.
Well, if there's nothing else, then I have any announcements?
Doing reports from our other committees?
Yeah, why is that not on the?
Oh, God.
We forgot to put it on.
You can put it in, you can do it though.
Sorry, I I he sends it to me. I just put times on it.
Okay. I just figured it.
I didn't write this. I I it was, yeah, announcements from the like commissioners, please. I don't know how those got forgotten. Sorry. You have to request it?
No, I just. Your host.
So while we're doing this, beautiful day in the valley today. I understand.
Oh, it's amazing.
Yeah, so I brought, I brought the rain with me down to North Carolina. It's been pissing rain since. Right, it's just dreadful, e- except down here, it's like, it's, it's seventy five degrees and raining. And it feels like you go outside, it's like somebody's like hitting you with like a wet dish rag in the face. It's terrible.
I don't miss that stuff.
Been there, done that, got too many wet t shirts. That's why I moved to Vermont here.
All right, so. This is from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, the big project coming up.
Yeah, Christian buyer. I was gonna, I was gonna talk about this, Andrew. You can, you can take it because Christian came to the C R V P D thing too.
Okay.
Years.
So this is part of Act one eighty one. It's changing. Act two fifty and other land use regulations for the state. And so they're trying to, the overall intent, I would say, is they're trying to make. Development easier in certain areas. Right, Paul? I mean, they're really trying to push.
Yeah, trying to, you know, just, yeah, eliminate act two fifty.
Uh, in downtown village districts where it can, where it's appropriate, I'd say.
Right.
Um. So part of that is this tiered program where tier one A is the most growth. And you get an act two fifty exemption. Um, and most of these tiers, like the more density that's allowed in a tier. The more free records that say you need, you need town water, you need town wastewater. Um.
So, so looking, uh, Andrew, can you go back into these tiers?
We are tier, we are firmly stuck entrenched in tier two.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Facetton is tier two or tier three.
So we can go down.
Is that correct?
Uh. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a downtown. So we're, I just, they have some maps actually.
Oh, Grove Center, Hamlet or anything like that. The center.
So the green is rural conservation.
And.
Can you tell where this is kind of?
Is.
This is the valley.
Yeah. Where the this is straight line, what's a straight line?
Town lines?
Yeah. Okay, that's the faced in line.
So everything in green is above twenty five hundred feet?
Or more wetlands or slope. Created in twenty five percent.
So it's just like undeveloped property?
This is the strictest zoning still.
Okay. I mean, I kind of knew that.
Yeah, so. Paul, my take on these is like, unless you're in the tier one. Uh, one A or one B. It's not that different. Outside of that, they made those zones a lot easier to do stuff, but outside of that, not too different.
Yeah, my my takeaway, and I was sitting next to Chuck at the um. Uh, M R V P D meeting on the seventeenth or whenever it was. And um, and Chuck and I were, you know, just, just like. Good for us, it doesn't really, doesn't have act one eighty one, doesn't have a huge impact on. On faced it, doesn't have any impact on faced it.
So that map is mimicking the soil and water conservation district and the forest reserve district on top of some. Very sloppy areas like the stuff above here, because that's rural residential, but it's extremely sloppy.
Yeah, where is North State? I think I see North State, you know, there.
Yeah.
It's the far up top, near the top. That's Randall Road then coming down.
Which ones, right?
That's Randall, correct?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that whole area is for is 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 white, so that's.
But it's another.
That's tier. That's development.
It's not, I mean, we can keep going.
The green, the green is.
But you'll see, we keep, we keep adding layers to this.
Okay.
Okay.
So here, you can see the ski area.
Yeah.
That's three ski areas.
Uh huh.
So here's rural ag forests takes up a lot of the.
Rural ag and forests, okay. Okay.
So these are. The more significant changes in these zones.
Okay, that's the waste field area there, Irisville.
What's the red cross?
I don't know what that is.
Okay, but the purple is the.
Is the.
Designated downtown.
Yeah.
The reason I bring it up, it sounds like these boundaries are all kind of up for discussion. I mean, some of the ones that are identified by like A and R are not, but. Other zones. Are, they're going to be figuring out where to put these tiers. And that's what the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission is doing.
Yeah, because like. There's a lot of spots in my property that are greater than twenty five percent grade and. I'm I'm completely in the way.
But that was, I think, traditionally an area of development because there was a schoolhouse there.
Yeah.
And some of the older homes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm.
That's my guess.
I'm intrigued by these maps.
So I go, there's a lot to this, obviously, so it's.
Yeah.
If you go to the Central Vermont Regional Planning website.
Yeah.
And then you go to where they link all the meeting info, the minutes, the packages, the agendas and everything. You can find this, the presentation's in there.
The information, the A D information from the last time, I mean, I just, I that was great too. Everything you bring in is great.
So where's this, um, Andrew's central?
Central, Central V T planning dot org. Minutes, meetings. And packet. Yeah. And they have videos on it now too, recordings.
Nice.
Central.
Yeah, you can, you can geek out in there.
So I'm looking at. The area there and the half, it's, it's Noel Farm, which is somewhat slowly, but sometimes not, but I think it's, it's in the green because it's conserved land.
Where's this?
To the right. Right by the little.
Right there. Left.
Tomorrow.
It's bragging.
Yeah. So this, this is a meeting package from April.
Yeah, whatever, last month, fourteenth.
And I'm assuming. This is all Big Basin and Camelstown. The big green.
And that'd be Forest Reserve District, which is, which is higher than twenty five hundred feet. And where soil and water conservation.
And it's also um, a pinch point in the Gray Mountains.
No, and it's conserved. I'll go to the plot of it's. So there's a lot of that. So nice.
And the aquifer. As you think about. Shepherd Brook and Frenchbrook, they're two of the most steep waterways, right?
I don't think so. They sure looked it. And then you got you.
While there's whiskey brook.
Another third one over there.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Whiskey Brook.
Uh, do you go up into the left? Into the basin?
Okay.
How to get that name?
Oh. I should ask the question. I don't know.
Somebody had a still up there, I guess.
Probably.
So that's all I have those.
That's very interesting. Can you stand?
It's right here on the, I can.
Or I can just.
Yeah.
Because I wrote down them.
Pretty interesting, yeah. There's a video.
That's the recording of the meeting.
Yeah. Watch that here.
Yeah. You can watch it in one and a half speed.
That's always fun. So I'm sorry, I got a little, the maps got me dazzled, so um. Basically, they're trying to. Figure out. I'm sorry, well, yeah, what's their, what's their goal?
They're making these maps right now.
Okay.
They're in the process of it.
To try to, and what's the end game for the maps?
Well, hopefully to have a. To focus development where it's, where it's good to do development and then to conserve where it's, you know, protect where we need to protect.
Matthew, we're looking forward. So, I mean, I. So and then, because there's areas that just shouldn't be developed. Because there's, there's water implications with the downhill neighbors and things. Is, so they're identifying really bad places as well?
Well, I mean.
The steep slopes.
Yeah, protecting headwaters, protecting forests. Steep slopes are always bad, what you learned. Um, that's why I use these high areas and soil water conservation district and our forest reserve district are all elevated. Those are our headwaters that start all our streams, so you want to protect that.
Yeah.
To make sure our our waters go. Keep it pristine.
So how can we use? The information they have to do a better job here?
Well, as an example, in future land use areas, rural general rural ag and forest. Um, can we go back to you, man? Oh, you switched off, okay. It talks about carefully managed developers promotes the working landscape and rural economy. And. Areas to provide critical wildlife habitat, rural outdoor recreation, flood storage, aquifer recharge and scenic beauty. I mean, that's. That's part of what we're. Trying to do. With these conversations we've been having.
Yeah.
But also we need to throw one out.
But that's, that what you just read is for the future use of. Ag and forestry land. Right? We have ag and forestry, but then we also have.
Rural ag and forest. Okay, that was rural ag and forest. So the areas that are not rural ag and forest. Well, there is, it are rural ag and forest. It's. Trying, it's telling us. We've got to follow these guidelines.
So the areas in, because they were considered rural ag and farm?
I'm on page, uh, slide fifteen. There's there.
So that's what that.
That's kind of a light green, like a, like a teal.
So the green areas are.
Green areas often.
Rural conservation. No one should develop in those because they're above twenty five hundred. Feet.
It says some of those areas. Are just conserved lands, either through Vermont Land Trust or something like that. So some of them are at that high elevation. They're just conserving. Because I was noticing that that Noel Farm.
Yeah.
But it's conservative.
Oh, you're saying the green blotches that are inside the white area?
So we're not supposed to do anything to it. Next part of Noel Farm, this seventeen acre block.
Okay.
But then, but then, then the next one with probably about rural island boards.
But then they feel that green out to the.
They, they. I I don't know. But then there's a, but that whole area, like the center base.
It's a park.
It's a man. Key, Key Basser and Brad Hill. Key Basser, that's.
But hey, there were, there were people in there, so.
But this area up here, it's, they're saying you can develop it.
My notes. Yeah.
You can get yourself some A D U's up there.
Why a seven lot subdivision? It's kind of ridiculous. Not made by me. Alright. That's interesting.
Yeah, this is very, I think this is very, very interesting.
And I was just showing you guys this. I don't know if you go on the A and R website to look at stuff too, you can do some overlays. Wet, wetland.
You can get yourself lost on that website. It's got so much stuff. Yeah.
Well, thank you. That's.
That's cool.
Yeah.
So if you read through there and you have. Comments that you want me to bring to them. Going to tomorrow night.
What's the like, what? What is the larger goal? Like, I mean, I know what our goals are here. We're trying to. Preserve the world, like, what?
They're trying to encourage development. And like, we're trying to build, you know, they have housing targets and stuff they're trying to hit.
Yeah.
And they think this is going to help.
Identify spots.
Do it. And make it easier to do if you get. Well, if you don't have to double dip between two fifty and towns.
So statistically, they're saying they're going to pull back on, they're going to make it, they're going to streamline the permitting process.
The tier one A gets exemption from act two fifty.
So I guess.
Which is a huge deal.
Yeah.
For builders.
I guess, Andrew, the question I have is. I understand the dark green. I understand the very light green scheme. I understand the rural ag and forest. Okay, what are they, what are they articulating in their plan? For the white areas, like. All along North Facetton.
Those are median areas.
These, this is white, then the white coming off of Key Basser, these little blocks, what are they saying can be done there? Uh, I mean.
That's tier two.
Pardon?
That's tier two. That's, as I would call it, same as it ever was.
So, which is. Tier two is areas that are not to jurisdictional thresholds will remain.
And the, what's the road rule again?
Yeah, what is the road rule?
They can't have a driveway a certain length or something?
We have restrictions. Do we create restrictions on driveways?
There are some restrictions on driveways at length and. If if it meets a certain length, you know, D R B slope, a certain amount of feet, which is staying slow.
I know that my driveway would not be approved anymore.
But if you were to, I mean, if you were to. If you were to cut like a, like a, like a three mile long driveway, right? Well, you're, you're going to start getting into the stormwater stuff because now you're going to have an impervious surface. How many acres? Thirty foot right away going one mile, you're going to reach that threshold with a three or five acre, so. All these different things that trigger different state permitting.
Yeah, so I guess, Andrew, my question is, is, okay, if it's tier two. What are they trying to articulate as their plan? Do we just continue what we're doing as a town? Or they try to encourage more housing? On that area that's tier two.
Okay.
I think some guidance. Because to me, the rural conservation and their ag, rural ag and forest is clear. They've got, they've got the guidance here in these tables.
Yeah.
I can understand that. But I don't understand what they're trying, I can understand the, the um. The areas for development, the enterprise areas.
Yeah.
Uh, but what about that white area? There's a lot of white along, come about. So what are they trying to tell us to do?
Oh, so it's.
That's, that's my question. Yeah.
Alright, so.
So that would help us, because there's some. Cause that would help us, cause there's some tension in our group about like, what do we do? And if they're saying they want those developed, okay, that gives you the guidance, they're saying it's up to the town.
Minutes in the agenda.
Yeah, rural residential district.
So are they trying to change that or not, that's the question.
Okay.
Cause rural residential things with wood size lots.
We have minimum one acre.
One acre.
So is this tiered framework gonna be put into legislation, or is it already existing?
Oh, and Brian Boyd.
Already is, it's act one eighty one.
That's our map.
But we have.
That's why it's taking him so long.
Till twenty twenty six to make.
He did say he had.
These maps and these tiers.
So this is the maps, then. And these are the maps.
Sorry, I'm just catching.
Then I'm after.
Okay. Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Road rule.
I gotta look that up, I don't know. I think they talked about driveway length.
I thought it was five hundred feet, or were they trying to implement a five hundred foot?
Well, it would be us.
Have a way.
I know that like, the previous planning commission tried to ban all development above a certain altitude and that got shut down by the select board pretty quick.
Uh, we already are.
Did not, Forest Reserve District is pretty much. Almost impossible to develop.
Nothing over seventy.
Minimum five acre lot.
Yeah.
Cause that, those are your headquarters, that's. It's twenty by a hundred above.
So really, this development's gonna be either in the ski areas or in town, if it's. In the valley at all.
Um, well, I would, I'm wondering Freddy is, what is the white along? Hugh Bassler. North center face, north Facetown and Randall Road, there's a lot of white there, what are they suggesting for that?
You can develop there now until it's a flood zone two thousand twenty eight.
Not, Michael, it's not, they're not changing, again, it's tier two, right, so they're not suggesting anything, they're just. Those white areas represent. Essentially. No, no change.
We're not, they're not advocating a change.
No.
Okay.
And I think, Michael, what I said to Ling and this, I'm talking off the top of my head, is that the. That Randall Road North Facetown intersection, that was a. Area of development. Right, that's where the school is, the farms were there. It was.
Subdivision's already there, so it's already proof for development, so it might, might be what it is too, it's not conserved, it's not over twenty five hundred feet. Or are there other things listed on that page?
Some slopes.
Sloes greater than twenty five percent.
Interior forest blocks. Habitat blocks.
They're everywhere. But what's, there's certain habitat blocks that.
Right, and will those change over time? Right, like deer yards were a big deal and now.
Your deer yards are listed in a different area than. And then your habitat blocks are. They're another system.
And priority.
That must be developable.
I don't know why Randall Road's not steeper, isn't it?
It is insanely steep, this is, this is, this is why I'm very confused by the map, because the, there's.
It's steep, but there's off the side, there's flats.
Yeah, I guess it's just really bad down the hole where I am.
Cause you're coming up out of that river valley, feels like it's steep both directions right there.
It's never been filled in, it's like we filled in Black Hill, right on Q Bassler, you know where the dip is?
Yeah.
That used to be steep. I mean.
On Q Bassler. Still get trucks spot stuck in the bottom. But it used to be.
It was, you went straight down. And then he went straight back up.
That's on Q Bass over Q Brook.
Yeah.
Where, so what did they, what they just brought material in?
And put that giant culvert in that whole area, it was.
Oh, I see, so it used to be like this, and now it's like this.
Hugh Brook has very steep ravine, it's a very steep side of ravine all the way up.
That one goes to your problem?
I went. One night coming back from. In a bed. And it was a snowstorm. And I'm going down, 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 and I, my car then tips up and I see a tree falling.
Oh my.
And I hit the brakes. The tree hits. I slide. Onto the branch and the tree bounces and I'm on top of the tree. Didn't jerk my seat, not a thing, and I'm stuck on top of a tree. And uh. I put my lights on, which was a good thing, because somebody else was coming down, 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 he said, if you hadn't done that, I'd have hit that tree. Freakiest thing ever, so they had to go on one side, do some cutting. The tow truck would come and then they'd go around the other side and then lift and cut and back and forth, I think they had to go three times. It was crazy, it was crazy.
When did they fix Q Bassler?
It was after that.
Cause the ski trails go through there.
What ski trails?
Bass Trail.
The snowmobile trail.
Just you, there's no restriction on your length of driveway, well, five hundred feet or less in the forest. But if you wanna go longer than that, you just have to have a pull off. A twelve foot by thirty foot pull off every five hundred feet. You set that pull off.
So more impervious surface.
More percy surface is gonna trigger the.
And you can't have, no driving shots too, so the three percent within thirty five feet of the center line of a road. But then is there any restriction? There's no restriction.
Yeah.
And, and driveways shall follow the natural contours of the land. Driveways that in any fifty foot section exceed an average rate of seventeen, fifteen percent shall use best construction process for practices. And submit an erosion control plan.
So probably in accordance with the Vermont Low Risk Handbook.
Yeah. Vermont?
Low Risk Handbook. Word developments.
Three points, I got that part, but where, where'd you just read that, it says.
Three point one. B. Uh, four.
What are these? Stripes? Unanswered questions defining future land use. Page, is that page seventeen? I mean, we see print maps, but.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah, what are all those stripes on page seventeen?
So Andrew, this is, this is what the state's gonna, A and R's gonna be using in that term, and you have to apply to become a territory, like you, town has to. To apply, and then they're gonna use this information to. For the act two fifty stuff, and then the rest of it's basically a guidance document for us to use. When we develop our landing regulations.
Yes, you have to apply to be. I think you even have to apply to be.
We'll have to take into consideration for sure.
And is it the boundary smoothing that's, that's relative to, I don't know what it's relevant to?
Legislation, legislation, you're almost done, right?
I might have to watch. They present the whole thing, right?
Yeah, they're working on all the stuff.
Wow.
Pretty amazing.
So, Michael, I had a question, um, after attending the. Mad River Path meeting. And there was a nice write-up in the paper, but didn't give us what the vote was.
The vote was. Most people wanted to have. A dedicated path. From Warren to Middlesex, that's the. That's the. Um. For all the sections. There were three choices. Shared road. Okay, just.
All medium and large.
Pardon?
Small, medium and large.
Yeah, okay, there was basically shared a road with a sign, there was. So, uh, road with like, uh, some separation bands and some, and maybe some. So a wider shoulder, and then the, the third option was the dedicated path that has a grass of some sort of verge. Separating the traffic, road traffic, vehicular traffic from the path. And the majority of people wanted that third option.
The most expensive, least. Attainable.
Well. The. The phasing, so what, so what the HB, which is the engineer did. Is they took that information, they came back. To us, the advisory board last week, or last, last month. And they gave us a very piecemeal. Um. A layout, proposed layout from Warren all the way to Middlesex. And. The easy sections. That could have a dedicated path. Were dedicated path. The majority of the, of the, of the ways were gonna be shared road use. And. People, some, a lot of people were concerned. That that shared road use is in high visibility, high. Potentially use areas. Because there's various types of people. There's a small percentage of the people who will bike anything. They'll just go. Okay, then the other extreme is people that'll only go on the. On the separate paths. And then, where do you? If, if, if you've got a piecemeal. Really nice path for a mile and then no nice path for a while, it's not gonna be used. Because that people that are off to the right, which are uncomfortable on using a road, even though you got, you have sectioned a very nice path, are not gonna use it.
Right.
And particularly around the school, around Waitsfield Elementary. Um, there's a section that goes from Waitsfield Elementary North. Past canyons up to Tremblay Road. And that's tight. And that the bridge is narrow, yeah, the bridge is narrow. So trying to get around that. Is something that we're trying to push to get done. That area, there's some areas that are high usage around, like. The seventeen or the section going with Fingers Green and stuff. So we can go from one hundred going around and not have them go through the, 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 uh, the route seventeen, one hundred intersection. Um. There's also some, and there's more town. Which is tough. Uh, but then the area between. One hundred B. And. And um. The eighteen twenty four house. There's some fast turns and stuff. And. You know, if we're gonna use that as a, a way for kids to go to high school. Then nobody's gonna wanna go on that road with that bridge that's over by the Turner Farm. So. The people. Wanted the higher, they wanted what they. Probably can't have, but it's a recognition that. We can ask for that, that's the goal, and then do it in phases. With a higher use area, so right now, the, uh, the engineer, they're, they're doing their corridor study report. It's um, coming out this week, it's forty seven pages. Um. It's got the purpose and need, the existing conditions, the public outreach. And the implementation and funding opportunities, we're gonna review that. Next week, or this weekend, next week, the sixteenth is coming out, and we're gonna have a meeting on the twenty second. And. Then it's gonna go to the trants. And they're gonna have to then look at. How can it be funded? And I'm sure what's gonna, it's gonna end up as a phased approach. That takes into account. Having larger contiguous areas of a divided path, a dedicated path in the higher use areas first. With the ultimate goal of eventually going all the way to Middlesex and the divided path, the dedicated path.
Shoulders just were. Maintained like with those sidewalk brushes.
Yeah, um.
Cause that would certainly make them safer.
There will be some of that, it's the bridges, like the Turner Farm Bridge, which is. Um, like towards the church, up by one hundred B, you know, the Turner Farm. Yeah, it's very narrow.
Keep repairing it, it's getting torn to shreds.
It's a very narrow bridge.
Sticking to the right.
And there, and there's some professional bikers, not professional, but people who actually literally bike to Middlesex. Who use that, and are quite concerned about that bridge, it's narrow. And of course, the one here by Tremblay Road. It's, it's, it's tight. And then going through the, uh, going around one hundred B. And we're gonna get the, most likely the path. South of, of Waitsfield on by towards Bunfield, the, the, the west Waitsfield, the, the wastewater treatment plant. That's gonna, the path is gonna be on that new pipeline. So that's likely, that's most likely gonna be one of the earliest dedicated pathways.
I feel like a lot of people just envision this as like a rail trail. And it's not gonna, if, if we could build a rail trail. It would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, the better railroad wasn't here first, and it went through Randolph instead, we'd have it all set. Yeah.
More towns. I think, sounds like they, they've got some state money coming to them. For this project.
There's money around.
Some more town, it looks like more town was awarded something.
Wex, Wex.
With transportation.
Yeah, I think he's the select board guy, Don Wexler, I think.
Done.
God is on our, our, our team. And he's working some stuff there.
He's an avid biker.
Yeah. Dara, Dara's from Moretown as well. Um. Yeah, we've got a really nice advisory group, it's, it's growing with some. Really people that are really interested in making this happen, so Misha's, Misha's got, uh, got. Um. He's working on these funding models. The feds. Are jerking us around a little bit, as you can imagine. And. But V Trans is the next group to kind of review this.
Can you guys talk about doing private donations instead of federal money or state money?
So. Yes. The, the, there are issues. With some of the private lands. That have stopped the path. From going in the past. Okay, there were, there were having, some people have actually opened up their land in the past. And then have not been treated properly. A lot of dog, like, we did Greenup Day. My, my, Suzanne and I did Greenup Day, we did Greenup Day around the, the pond, the, the snowmaking pond.
Yeah, and dog waste bags.
The biggest by qua, by far in quantity, what we picked up was. Dog poop bags. That was it, you know, and. Um. It's pretty disgusting, so you can imagine like the farmers, why do they wanna open up their land? When they start seeing dog poop bags everywhere. You know, so.
There's more. To that too, and the people drove down. Into the fields.
In the fields.
Um, one particular story was. I'm here to get rocks. It's like, but you can't drive in my field. But I'm here to get rocks, well, you can get rocks, but you can't drive in my field. Well, I can't carry the rocks that far. Man, this is private property. This is Vermont, there's no such thing, we'll see.
Rocks, closely forget rock.
That was the final straw.
Hmm, okay.
Who was that, Freddie?
I'm sorry?
Where'd that happen?
Uh. Down.
Tremblay.
Can't be the name.
Yeah.
I think, I think dog poop on a shared path, Michael is certainly an issue, you know, that, the, the. Snowmaking ponds are super popular for, for dog walking. Um, I think the, 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 the. Transportation corridor is gonna be more. Commuting, you know, recreating. I don't, I don't envision it as a, a, a real like popular. Dog walking, uh, spot, you know, and that's just. Based on my experience in other places that have these paths. Um. You know, it's, it's, it's tough to walk your dog when people are ripping by on bikes and. Whatnot, it's just not. It's just, they're, they're sort of, I mean, not the people won't do it, but. I get it, you know, dog poops a problem everywhere.
Fair comment, uh, that, that makes sense, but Andrew asked, are we looking for donations? The answer is yes. One of the first we were trying to use, will get easements.
Yeah.
And, you know, we talked to people about donating some land, and then we get up this kind of pushback. Then we gotta come up with some cash for some of the landings. And, you know, everybody's got a price.
Yeah.
So that's kind of one of the things we're working on. And it's delicate, it's very delicate. So, yeah, we, we, I mean, there's a lot of. Great activities in this town that'd be nice if they got funded, like the community center, the, the pool. Um, stadium, people have been trying to fund that, and. Yeah, the path would be nice, but. You know, we've got some easements.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the stove, and I think that one was doable because they got some big private donations.
Hmm. Yeah.
Big foundations, you know, with Vermont connections.
Well, Freeman Foundation was in store, I bet they gave a bunch of money, right?
I think there's a few big ones, probably, but.
I'll talk to Misha and some of the other people who, cause I'm new to the valley, there's some people on our team who are pretty old, and they've been in the wild. Old timers, I'll ask about that. But, yeah, we are using that stove as a as a beautiful model.
So, so segment, this segment of the path. Is thanks to a generous contribution from the blah blah blah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, the dog poop situation, just coming back from Florida. Um, we were not on the farm and walking the dogs. And they have poop stations, and somebody picks up the poop every day, but they've got bags. So you tie it onto your handle, you drop it off, you get a new bag, it's easy. So they've got poop stations, you know, with a.
Buckets.
Buckets.
Like at the rest areas.
Right, and they've got poop bags up above. So you drop your bag off, you grab a new bag, you tie it on your leash, and you keep going, so you don't have to.
Yeah, our problem, our problem is we have plenty of bags, but not enough places to put the bags.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be. No, you know, you go, you go to the, you go to the snowmaking ponds, and there's a poop bag station, you go to Boys Hill, there's a poop bag station. Um, but then people don't, you know, they might bag it, but then they leave it because there's no place to put it.
Well, I drive around with them under my windshield wiper for a while.
So I'm in the bed of a pickup truck near where I'm parked. That's why I put a cap on my on my trucks, and nobody can do that to me.
Pires, car seats.
In the basin, not this year, this year I picked up beer bottles and wine and cigarettes, and the next day. Was laden again, but one year I picked up toilet paper, there was somebody going down there, I picked up seventeen watts of toilet paper. Used.
They need, they need to go follow four point three B and put up a trailer that separates this.
All right, so Paul, did you have a?
Sure, so um, yeah, yeah, so uh Andrew touched on um what's going on there with um. With Central Vermont, um Christian Meyer from Central Vermont came to the MRVPD. Uh, meeting on the seventeenth and uh and and gave us a whole rundown on the tiers as well. Um, also at that meeting, um Sugar Bush gave their update. Um, their twenty twenty-four report. Um, and uh Joel Rhodes. From Sugar Bush is now stepping in, cause Margo is dealing with cancer. Um, and then uh Sam Robinson gave a little little talk about the uh. The uh, the the transportation corridor, um uh and and its status. So it was, it was, it was a good meeting, I, you know, like, a- as I said, I've said before, I'm kind of new to this, I didn't understand how. How the Central Vermont Planning um Commission. Uh dovetails in with the Maverick Valley Planning District. And what their purpose is, and I didn't realize that CRV, CBRPC. Is one of eleven statewide commissions. It kind of functions like a, kind of like a county government, if you will, like, you know, so. Anyway, I'm 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 learning, it was interesting, um Christian's a good guy, um super smart. Um, it's a great presentation, and um. Uh. One of the things, um Andrew touched on, and so we talked about like, what what's their, what's their mission, or what's their, what's their mandate? I I wouldn't say that their mandate is is necessarily pro-development. But there are targets in every commission, uh of which, um, you know, CBRPC is one of eleven. Um, has um targets, housing targets. That they're supposed to meet, I, there's a ten-year target, a fifteen-year, twenty-year target, and they are, they are rather um. Sort of pie in the sky, yeah, you know, if you will. Um, they're they're very um aspirational, and maybe not entirely realistic. Um, but my takeaway from his presentation and and what, you know, what we touched on tonight. Is that um Act one eighty-one um is a step in the right direction. Um, is still filled with all that sort of good old sort of Vermont. You know, micro-managing things, um but it's a, it's a far cry better than Act two fifty. Over and out.
Oh, out of that discussion, we will get more guidance. As to what to do with our our zoning out of this.
Well, again, because because faced in. Falls. Almost one hundred percent outside of any of the new, you know, tiers. Um, you know, we're we're we're, we're not, we're largely um unaffected by Act. One eighty-one, but where it's important is is in is in Waitsfield primarily, um and um. And so, you know, and we have an interest, you know, we have a, we have an interest. Um, in what goes on in in Waitsfield and and Irisville. Um, because that's our, that's our commercial core, you know, that's where, you know, we're we're part of that, and um. And so, while we're on the sidelines from a, from a legal, technical um perspective. Uh, we certainly have um a a vested interest um to to make sure that. Um, what happens there is um. Is is in line with with what what we wanna see happen in our beliefs. So as much as we can have an influence on on their policies, and I I think that's why it's important that. You know, we stay involved with the with the MRVPD, and we stay involved with 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 Central Vermont Planning Commission. Um, because while basin is not in the in the thick of it. Um, all the decisions that are being made in these in these other areas have an impact on us.
So I'm trying to interpret what you said, and I I can condense it saying, it's gonna greatly affect. The Waitsfield Irisville Development Coil.
Yeah.
But.
Gonna make it easier, a- and and it's gonna make it, you know, that the, so uh two, two meetings ago. Uh, there was a presentation on on the, on on the proposed development uh along Slow Road. Which runs from.
Yeah.
Uh, in front of Shaw's, you know, in between Shaw's and the ICS. And past the old uh TD Bank Building and down towards um Stadium. Um, and the proposed um build out on on Slow Road. Um, is, you know, it's, it's, it's. You you know, it's gonna become a real thing, and um uh I I think that, I think. That we have to. You know, as as non-residents of Waitsfield with no voting rights, um we still. Need to, you know, pay attention to that, and um. And make our, make our 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 feelings and our opinions known.
So that's for the tier, that's for the tiers around Waitsfield and Irisville, but for us. That tier two. They're just. Is it correct to say that all this commission is doing is documenting the status quo, or they directing some changes?
Well, there are other. Standing, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that um there's not. Uh, any real tangible impact on our.
With this part of it, but with other parts, like, well, duplex part, you know, that's an S one hundred, but. Those apply to tier two, and like, there's other parts of this bill.
Right.
That could in theory apply to tier two.
Water usage plus one densities and.
Yeah. What was that you?
There's certain things that they did two years ago with water usage in these these. If you have water wastewater, water municipal water and municipal wastewater. And if you're in a growth center, like Waitsville is proposing to do, that they'll have increased densities.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about faced, and I'm saying that area on Cubasser, North Facetown. Randall Road, that area that's got white, are there any changes to that, or there's documenting the status quo?
Yeah, status quo.
Well, that mean they're big. One eighty-one is got a lot of other things in it though, too, that is now statute that we have to follow. That's S one hundred from twenty twenty-three.
All right, there's two years, there's the home act.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to understand, you know, this discussion that we had half an hour, forty-five minutes ago about the um. The auxiliary dwelling units.
Yeah.
And 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 I'm trying to understand this Act one eighty-one is changing anything that we need to be.
We're staying in tier two, we are, cause we don't have a growth center, village center, and with, we got all these different.
So then my comments are unchanged, if they were.
But I think it's a good tool that the towns can use to identify where growth can happen. Um, this.
We're hamstrung, I I. I I don't know how, I I don't know how else to put this, but. My takeaway is that Act one eighty-one. Um, does not impact. Faced in in any significant way, shape, or form. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I don't think you're wrong.
Is there somewhere, I'm, you said something about this development on Slow Road, is there somewhere where I can find the presentation, cause I'm curious about that?
Yeah, you can, you can go to the, you can go to the. Maverick River Valley Planning District. Um, uh, website and click on. Um, you know, agendas, and uh and there's, there's links. To the presentation that that Sam and Josh uh put together, there's um. Storyboards, I don't know what you call them, like, we we, much like the, much like the transportation, uh. We wandered around, it's probably also on the Waitsfield, yeah, it's also probably on the the Waitsfield Town's website as well.
I was poking around in the planet, I couldn't find it there, that's why I waited so long.
It's the town center project, right?
Irisville Village, master.
Irisville Village.
The thing I see faced in being impacted by is if you increase density. Traffic and people in our recreation areas.
Yeah.
And it'll be tough for the next of being next to Boston.
You know, we're still. Anyway, but not important.
What?
I I was just gonna say, Freddie, no, I I understand, yeah, I mean, if there's more, if there's more development, more density in Irisville. Um, a consequence of that is um more people recreating in Faceden, um but. Uh, you know, s- still, um, I was up at Boys Hill. Last sunny day, I didn't even remember it was, you know, and there was like. Five cars parked up at Boys Hill, I was like, oh my god, like, like, fighting for a parking space at Boys Hill. This is gonna be crazy, there's gonna be so many people, I'm gonna run into people with dogs, and my wife doesn't like seeing other dogs, and it's crazy. I don't know where they all were, but we did our traditional walk up to the top of Boys Hill, wandered around, didn't see a single other soul. So I think Basin has the ability to absorb uh. A a little bit more traffic. Without it, without it really adversely impacting our 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 day-to-day lives. And I think that the the benefits of of a of a of a of a of a of a thriving, successful. Commercial area in Irisville are 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 worth, are worth the the risk of having. More trail users. But. We're way off.
Care about the priest girls getting stuck in the road after the. Trying to get done, the racetrack.
Yeah. I move that we adjourn.
What?
We don't accept those reports.
I just wrote down that, and I do have a discussion on CVTPC, plan, Andy's planning map, which is based on Act one eighty-one, and see the link. And I wrote down the manner of the path, the corridor study report is under final review. Input from the public meeting in March, and the advisory team is invited to VHB, once completed, we submit it to Vtrans for review.
That's nice, and actually providing that link, I think people would like to see that, that's nice.
And I I I sensed with before you called it simpler, so I didn't add anything to that, what you want with the right something.
I second your movement to adjourn.
I have a question, so where are we with this town plan, we were talking about getting a survey, we may need progress on that.
Well, Paul and Andrew were talking about, you you said you were gonna work on grants or something?
In the fall.
In the fall, right, that's where we're at, we're in the fall.
Okay, so we're not.
You've got the survey from Carol.
I've got the um survey from Carol, and the, I believe the one they did in Moretown as well. Um. And I think that we could run them through ChatGPT, I mean, I think we should utilize as much AI as we can. And I would think it would help us. Do some work on our our town plan and our town.
Yeah, really good. Backfinders, what the people want.
I mean, I just Google something, it came up with something totally right, yes, so you do have to pay attention, but.
I think the town has changed dramatically after COVID, and people moving, I mean, I moved here since then, you know. Um, it's, I think that, I think that that will be very fruitful.
I look forward to the survey, because right now, I think we're working in a vacuum, we all have our our opinions.
Yeah.
But we need to have public's input to do this town plan.
And I think the hardest piece is getting the outreach, getting more people. Answers, you know, and.
I I agree that we're in a vacuum, but I also think that um we actually represent a a fairly. Uh, diverse, um. You know, group, I mean, we we sort of, we all. Have our our, you know, we 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 all are. We're we're not all the same on this commission. I don't know, I was gonna say something possibly inappropriate, but you know, I think we all have diverse uh viewpoints and. And 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 backgrounds, and and, yeah, we we are just five of us yakking at each other, and the survey is important, but. But I think we we have a diversity of 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 backgrounds and opinions, and um, and we should, we should. You know, lean into that and trust that. Um, because surveys are oftentimes only, you know, uh lies, damn lies, and. Just statistics, I I, you know, and I don't know. Think, I think, you know, we have to, we have to trust, we have to. Trust ourselves a little bit.
And I think surveys can be really slanted and leading.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Exactly.
Hard to get the wording right. And the, yeah.
The respondents, I mean, you know.
Technical information is slanted like crazy, if you just haven't seen people on a trail or a skate rink, you know, and pretty tough to drive.
All right, I'm sorry, I missed whether we're adjourned or not, but um I I will.
You didn't vote.
Oh.
It was seconded, we just, Michael said he had a question.
Ah. All right.
So Freddie moved, I seconded, shall we put a vote? So Freddie moved, I seconded, shall we put a vote to adjourn?
Hi.
I'm back to my, I. I'm going back to my mom's, my ninety-five-year-old mother's house. Um, so cheers, um. Hoping there's no medical emergencies uh, in June. I plan on being live and in person, if you'll have me.
Looking forward to it.
All right.
See you then.
All right, thanks, guys.